The session is now called to order. The session is now called to order. Please rise for the singing of the national anthem. Please rise for the singing of the national anthem.
Bayam magiliw perasang silang anan, Bayam magiliw perasang silang anan, alang ng kuso sa dipipoy buhay. alang ng kuso sa dipipoy buhay. Lubang hiniram, buya ka lang magigil, Lubang hiniram, buya ka lang magigil, sa manlulupi kita pasisinil. sa manlulupi kita pasisinil. Sa dalat at bundok sa simoy at sa labitong paghaw, Sa dalat at bundok sa simoy at sa labitong paghaw, may hilat ang tula at awit sa paglayang pinabahal. may hilat ang tula at awit sa paglayang pinabahal. Ang isan ng kuwataw at muika kumpay narang heripin, Ang isan ng kuwataw at muika kumpay narang heripin, ang pituming na paraw niya kailan pangpali manggilingin. ang pituming na paraw niya kailan pangpali manggilingin. Luban ang araw ng kuwata ng aming pagsikap, Luban ang araw ng kuwata ng aming pagsikap, uwi ay lami sa tinito. uwi ay lami sa tinito. Aming likaya dapat may mahapin ang lahat ay nang daril sayo. Aming likaya dapat may mahapin ang lahat ay nang daril sayo.
Please remain standing for the prayer to be led Please remain standing for the prayer to be led by the Honorable Ann K. Hofer by the Honorable Ann K. Hofer of the 2nd District of San Buanga Cibugay. of the 2nd District of San Buanga Cibugay.
Lord God Almighty, we bow down before you, Lord God Almighty, we bow down before you, our hearts overflowing with thanksgiving for manifold blessings. our hearts overflowing with thanksgiving for manifold blessings. And we call to mind verse 4 of Psalm 100 And we call to mind verse 4 of Psalm 100 which joyously exorts, which joyously exhorts, "Enter into his gates with thanksgiving "Enter into his gates with thanksgiving and into his courts with praise. and into his courts with praise. Be thankful unto him and bless his name." Be thankful unto him and bless his name." We bless your name, Lord, thankful unto you We bless your name, Lord, thankful unto you for inspiring and guiding President Duterte for inspiring and guiding President Duterte into signing such a noble law, RA 10931, into signing such a noble law, RA 10931, or the Universal Access to Quality Tertiary Education Act, or the Universal Access to Quality Tertiary Education Act, which will benefit millions of Filipino youth. which will benefit millions of Filipino youth. And also for signing into law other equally important measures, And also for signing into law other equally important measures, such as an act extending the passport validity for 10 years, such as an act extending the passport validity for 10 years, an act establishing the free internet access program in public places, an act establishing the free internet access program in public places, an act extending the validity of driver's license to five years, an act extending the validity of driver's license to five years, and an act strengthening the anti-hospital deposit law. and an act strengthening the anti-hospital deposit law. And Lord, in whatever we are trying to accomplish here in Congress, And Lord, in whatever we are trying to accomplish here in Congress, whether it be in our crucial budget hearings whether it be in our crucial budget hearings or our vital committee meetings, or our vital committee meetings, help us always to keep in mind help us always to keep in mind that whatever success we may achieve that whatever success we may achieve can be attributed only to you, can be attributed only to you, to your mercy, to your wisdom, to your love. to your mercy, to your wisdom, to your love. In all that we do here therefore, Lord God, be with us, In all that we do here therefore, Lord God, be with us, be our compass and our balance. be our compass and our balance. For today, many challenges press upon us from all sides. For today, many challenges press upon us from all sides. Thus, we need your steadying strength, Lord, Thus, we need your steadying strength, Lord, to successfully hurdle each challenge. to successfully hurdle each challenge. Help us, Lord, to keep in mind the words of Winston Churchill Help us, Lord, to keep in mind the words of Winston Churchill when he said, when he said, "Courage is what it takes to stand up and speak; "Courage is what it takes to stand up and speak; courage is also what it takes to sit down and listen." courage is also what it takes to sit down and listen." Grant us, Lord, the courage to listen to each other. Grant us, Lord, the courage to listen to each other. For with sincere listening one arrives at deep understanding For with sincere listening one arrives at deep understanding and with it a unifying. and with it a unifying. We become unified in our purpose of doing good We become unified in our purpose of doing good and following your word and following your word and thus do we glorify and praise you, Lord, forever and ever. Amen. and thus do we glorify and praise you, Lord, forever and ever. Amen.
Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members. Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members. The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll of members: Honorable Representatives Abad Abaya,
Roll of members: Honorable Representatives Abad Abaya,
Abayon Abelianosa, Abu Abueg Charon,
Abayon Abelianosa, Abu Abueg Charon,
Acop Acosta, Costa Alba, Adiong Advinkula,
Acop Acosta, Costa Alba, Adiong Advinkula,
Agarau Agabau, Aglibe Bilyar, Albano Alcala,
Agarau Agabau, Aglibe Bilyar, Albano Alcala,
Alejano Almario, Almonte Alonte,
Alejano Almario, Almonte Alonte,
Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon,
Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon,
Amante Amatong, Andaya Angara Castillo,
Amante Amatong, Andaya Angara Castillo,
Antonino Antonio Akinawak Saysay, Aragones Arbison,
Antonino Antonio Akinawak Saysay, Aragones Arbison,
Arcillas Arenas, Atienza Aumentado, Bagao,
Arcillas Arenas, Atienza Aumentado, Bagao,
Bagatzing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga,
Bagatzing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga,
Batawil, Batocabe, Bautista Bandigan,
Batawil Batocabe, Bautista Bandigan,
Belaro Belmonte Pelixiano, Belmonte Jose Christopher,
Belaro Belmonte Pelixiano, Belmonte Jose Christopher,
Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis,
Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez Bernos, Bertis,
Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok,
Biazon Biliones, Birón Bolilia, Bondok,
Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida,
Bordado Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida,
Rosas, Bulut Begtang, Kagas Calderon,
Rosas Bulut Begtang, Kagas Calderon,
Calixro Robiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama,
Calixro Robiano, Caminero, Campos Canama,
Kari Casila, Castelo Castro, Franz Castro Fred,
Kari Casila, Castelo Castro, Franz Castro Fred,
Katamco Cayetano, Celeste Seráfica, Ceriles,
Katamco Cayetano, Celeste Seráfica, Ceriles,
Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Cowanco, Coliantes Cortés,
Chávez Chipeco, Co, Cowanco, Coliantes Cortés,
Fortuna Casalan, Pisólogo Kua, Cuarezma Cueva,
Fortuna Casalan, Pisólogo Kua, Cuarezma Cueba,
Dalipe Datol, Daza de Jesús de Venecia,
Dalipe Datol, Daza de Jesús de Venecia,
De Vera, Defensor del Mar, Del Rosario,
De Vera Defensor del Mar, Del Rosario,
De Los Amontalia, Nimaporob Abdullah,
De Los Amontalia, Nimaporob Abdullah,
Nimaporoh Mohammed Khalid, Duabit Durano,
Nimaporoh Mohammed Khalid, Duabit Durano, Di Elago, Enverga, Erise, Regel,
Di Elago, Enverga, Erise, Regel, Rimita Buahin,
Rimita Buahin, Escudero Espina Espino Estrella,
Escudero Espina Espino Estrella, Josebio Abardoni,
Josebio Abardoni, Pariñas Fernando,
Pariñas Fernando, Pereir Juliet, Pereir Luis John John,
Pereir Juliet, Pereir Luis John John,
Periol Florendo Flores, Fortun Fortuno,
Periol Florendo, Flores, Fortun Fortuno,
Mentebelia, Garbin Garcia Gwendolin,
Mentebelia, Garbin Garcia Gwendolin,
Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin,
Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin,
Oscar Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron,
Oscar Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron,
Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez Gonzaga,
Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez Gonzaga,
Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Abardoni,
Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Abardoni,
Gonzalez Fernando, Goriseta, Gulias Fernández,
Gonzalez Fernando, Goriseta, Gulias Fernández,
Pereiradi Hofer, Alosjos Javier, Co Konghun Labad Labad,
Pereiradi Hofer, Alosjos Javier, Co Konghun Labad Labad,
Lacson Lagman Lanete Laogan, Pasatin Lea Chon,
Lacson Lagman Lanete Laogan, Pasatin Lea Chon,
Lee Lim Caichong, Lobrigat Lopez Benhar,
Lee Lim Caichong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benhar,
Lopez Carlo Lopez Manuel Luis Loyola,
Lopez Carlo Lopez Manuel Luis Loyola,
Macapagalaroyo Maceda Madrona Malapitan,
Macapagalaroyo Maceda Madrona Malapitan,
Manalo Mangawang, Magodadato Sojarto,
Manalo Mangawang, Magodadato Sojarto,
Magodadato Sahid Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño,
Magodadato Sahid Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño,
Marquez Martinez, Matugas, Melana Emiliana,
Marquez Martinez, Matugas, Melana Emiliana,
Mending Mendoza Mercado, Mirasol Montoro,
Mending Mendoza Mercado, Mirasol Montoro,
Naba Nieto Noel Nograles Yarico, Nograles Carlo,
Naba Nieto, Noel Nograles Yarico, Nograles Carlo,
Nolasco Munyas Malanyaon, Uaminal Okampo,
Nolasco Munyas Malanyaon, Uaminal Okampo, Olivares Ong Edwin, Ong Henry,
Olivares Ong Edwin Ong Henry, Ong Ortega Pablo,
Ong Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bin Inola,
Ortega Bin Inola, Paciau Paduano,
Paciau Paduano, Palma Pancho Panganiban,
Palma Pancho Panganiban, Panotes Papandayan,
Panotes Papandayan, Pichai Pimentel,
Pichai Pimentel, Pinera Plaza Primicia Sagapas,
Pinera Plaza Primicia Sagapas, Kimbo Radzasa,
Kimbo Radaza Ramiresato, Ramos Relampagos,
Ramiresato Ramos, Relampagos, Rebilia Rova Puno,
Rebilia Rova Puno, Robes Procamora,
Robes Procamora, Rodriguez Isidro,
Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero,
Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes Romualdo, Roque Harry,
Romualdes Romualdo, Roque Harry, Roque Rogelio,
Roque Rogelio, Saqdalan Saquerbaría, Sahali,
Saqdalan Saquerbaría, Sahali, San Ceda Salimbangun,
San Ceda Salimbangun, Salo Salon,
Salo Salon, San Bar San Doval, Santos Rekto,
San Bar San Doval, Santos Rekto,
Salmiento Cesar, Salmiento Edgar Mary,
Salmiento Cesar, Salmiento Edgar Mary,
Sabelliano, Seima Xiau, Silberio, Singzon,
Sabelliano, Seima Xiau, Silberio, Singzon,
Suan Sing Estrelita, Suan Sing Horacio,
Suan Sing Estrelita, Suan Sing Horacio, Suárez Sielvarado, Tambuntin,
Suárez Sielvarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina,
Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sierni,
Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sierni, Tejada, Tebes,
Tejada Tebes, Tianco King, Tinio Tolentino,
Tianco King, Tinio Tolentino, Treñas,
Treñas Tugna Tupas Torabinataman, Ti Umali Unavia,
Tugna Tupas Torabinataman, Ti Umali Unavia, Ungab Uniko Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando,
Ungab Uniko Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando,
Uy Barreta, Vargas Vargas Alconzo,
Uy Barreta, Vargas Vargas Alconso,
Velarde Velasco, Velasco Caterra, Veloso,
Velarde Velasco, Velasco Caterra, Veloso,
Bergara Villafuerte Villanueva, Villarazas Suárez,
Bergara Villafuerte Villanueva, Villarazas Suárez,
Villarica Villarin, Yolago, Yap Arthur,
Villarica Villarin, Yolago, Yap Arthur,
Yap Melacio, Yap Victor, Yu Samora Maria Carmen,
Yap Melacio, Yap Victor, Yu Samora Maria Carmen,
Samora Ronaldo, Sarate Subir. The speaker is present.
Samora Ronaldo, Sarate Subir. The speaker is present.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 256 members responded to the call.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 256 members responded to the call.
With 256 members responding to the call, With 256 members responding to the call, the Chair hereby declares the presence of a quorum. the Chair hereby declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the deferment Madam Speaker, I move for the deferment of the approval of the Journal of the previous session. of the approval of the Journal of the previous session.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we now proceed Madam Speaker, I move that we now proceed with a reference of business with a reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports. on first reading as well as communications and committee reports. So move, Madam Speaker. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the bills and resolutions The Secretary General is directed to read the bills and resolutions on first reading for referrals to appropriate committees. on first reading for referrals to appropriate committees.
Reference of business: Bills on first reading, Reference of business: Bills on first reading, House Bill 1691 removing the restrictions House Bill 1691 removing the restrictions and registration of plant titles under sections 118, 119, and registration of plant titles under sections 118, 119, and other restrictions against encumbrance. and other restrictions against encumbrance. Representative Hernandez. Representative Hernandez.
To the Committee on Justice. To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1692 implementing journalism corps House Bill 1692 implementing journalism corps as a mandatory subject in the senior high school. as a mandatory subject in the senior high school. Representative Sielvarado. Representative Sielvarado.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture. To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1693 creating the Tourism Presilience House Bill 1693 creating the Tourism Presilience Certification Program. Representative Gonzalez Gomez. Certification Program. Representative Gonzalez Gomez.
To the Committee on Tourism. To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1694 amending certain provisions House Bill 1694 amending certain provisions of Republic Act 8495. Representative Del Rosario. of Republic Act 8495. Representative Del Rosario.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation. To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 1695 providing for a mandatory period House Bill 1695 providing for a mandatory period to relocate squatters. Representative Del Rosario. to relocate squatters. Representative Del Rosario.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development. To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 1696 renaming Panlayaan Technical Vocational School House Bill 1696 renaming Panlayaan Technical Vocational School as Salvador Escudero, the Third School of Arts and Trades. as Salvador Escudero, the Third School of Arts and Trades. Representative Bravo Anthony. Representative Bravo Anthony.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education. To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
Resolution South Solution 1156 directing appropriate committees Resolution South Solution 1156 directing appropriate committees to undertake a review of Republic Act 9511. to undertake a review of Republic Act 9511. Representative Abardoni. Representative Abardoni.
To the Committee on Rules. To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1157 commanding the Iglesia de Cristo House Resolution 1157 commanding the Iglesia de Cristo under 103rd anniversary on July 27, 2017. under 103rd anniversary on July 27, 2017. Representative Silberio. Representative Silberio.
To the Committee on Rules. To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1158 recognizing the accomplishments House Solution 1158 recognizing the accomplishments of the Naya. Representative Velasco. of the Naya. Representative Velasco.
To the Committee on Rules. To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1159 expressing profound condolences House Solution 1159 expressing profound condolences on the House on the demise of veteran directors on the House on the demise of veteran directors of Socrates Hernandez Topasio, also known as Soxin Topasio. of Socrates Hernandez Topasio, also known as Soxin Topasio. Representative Olivares. Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules. To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1160 expressing profound condolences House Solution 1160 expressing profound condolences of the House on the demise of Miss Presentacion of the House on the demise of Miss Presentacion President Lopez Sinakis, board member of ABSBN. President Lopez Sinakis, board member of ABSBN. Representative Olivares. Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules. To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1161 calling for investigation House Solution 1161 calling for investigation by appropriate committee on the immediate approval by appropriate committee on the immediate approval of the Seven Power Supply Agreements. of the Seven Power Supply Agreements. Representative Suarez. Representative Suarez.
To the Committee on Rules. To the Committee on Rules.
Communications letter dated August 2. Communications letter dated August 2. Absalvador C. Medialdea, Executive Secretary. Absalvador C. Medialdea, Executive Secretary.
To the Archives. To the Archives.
Committee Report Support Number 340 Committee Report Support Number 340 on House Bill Number 6112. on House Bill Number 6112.
To the Committee on Rules. To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 341 on House Bill Number 6114. Report Number 341 on House Bill Number 6114.
To the Committee on Rules. To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, move for a few minutes of suspension. move for a few minutes of suspension.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is granted. Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is granted. Session is suspended. Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Mr. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, by leave of the House, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill 5745, contained in Committee Report Number 262, submitted by the Committee on Agriculture and Food, and the Committee on Appropriations.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure? So move.
Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill Number 5745, on establishing the Coconut Farmers and Industry Development Trust Fund and providing for its management and utilization.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, our parliamentary status is that we are in the period of sponsorship and debate, and with that, Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Chairman, the Honorable Pangani Ban, and and his and the interpolator, the Honorable Edsel Lagman.
The Honorable Pangani Ban is recognized to sponsor the measure, and the Honorable Lagman is likewise recognized to start his interpolation.
I move for a few minutes suspension.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, our parliamentary status is that we are in the period of sponsorship and debates regarding Committee Report Number 262 regarding House Bill Number 2745. The the Honorable Pangani Ban has been recognized, and the Honorable Lagman has been recognized, and move that they continue with their interpolation. So move, Madam Speaker, Your Honor.
So granted. Mr. Chairman, kindly proceed.
Madam Speaker, this representation is ready to accept any clarificatory questions from the interpolator. Madam Speaker.
Yes, kindly proceed, Congressman Lagman.
Madam Speaker, firstly, I would like to thank the distinguished sponsor for the avalanche of materials which he sent to my office with respect to this case. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Congressman Lagman.
Next, I would like to clarify that I am interpolating not because I am against the bill. I am in favor of the bill, more particularly to introduce subsequently amendments to give priority, reasonable priority, to the interest of small cocoa nut farmers. Let me proceed, Madam Speaker. The Supreme Court, in its final and last decision on the cocoa levy funds, declared that the funds should be utilized for the benefit of cocoa farmers and the development of the cocoa industry. But the Supreme Court did not say how much should go to the coconut farmers, and how much should be allocated for the development of the cocoa industry. Is that correct? This distinguished sponsor?
Yes, Madam Speaker. In the ruling of the Supreme Court, the court ruled of the public nature of the fund and for the purpose of the fund to be used for the development of the coconut industry and for the coconut farmers. It did not state as regards the amount to be used to develop the industry and for the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker.
Just to be very specific, the Supreme Court said in this order, for the benefit of the coconut farmers and the development of the coconut industry. In other words, distinguished sponsor, the Supreme Court left to the full discretion of the Congress to allocate the funds between the coconut farmers and the development of the coconut industry. Do you agree to that proposition?
Madam Speaker, inasmuch as the decision of the Supreme Court did not state the amount as regards of the amount to be spent for the coconut industry and for the development of the coconut industry and for the coconut and for the coconut farmers, this representation would tend to agree that this Congress has the latitude to determine the amount to be spent for the development of the coconut industry and for the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker.
With more reason, Your Honor, distinguished sponsor, that the levy was generated as an impulse on coconut farmers, and it stands to social justice, reason, and logic that the direct interest of cocoa farmers must be prioritized percentage-wise. Would you agree to this proposition?
Madam Speaker, with respect to the percentage of the funds to be used for the development of the coconut industry and for the percentage of the fund to be used for the exclusive benefit of the coconut farmers, the, as I have said, the Supreme Court did not elaborate on that matter. However, on the decision of the Supreme Court, it is very categorically it is categorically said that the funds should be used for the development of the coconut industry and the coconut and for the benefit of the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker.
The Supreme Court said for the benefit of the cocoa farmers and the development of the coconut industry, without any percentage allocation. So the distinguished sponsor agreed that it is Congress who has the full discretion on how the funds would be allocated between the coconut farmers and the coconut industry. Now, would eighty to twenty percent allocation ratio in favor of the coconut farmers be justified and reasonable?
Madam Speaker, may I just take, I mean, may I just take a look, I mean, read the decision of the Supreme Court, because it did not categorically state that there should be a fund for the coconut industry and funds for the coconut farmers. Rather, it said it the Supreme Court viewed the fund as one whole and should be used for the development of the coconut industry for the benefit of the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker. So the proposed bill did not did not take into consideration the percentage of the funds to be used for the development of the coconut industry and for the for the benefit of the coconut farmers, because as it is viewed, the development of the coconut industry would benefit the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker.
Well, but since the power to appropriate belongs to Congress, then the authority to prioritize the utilization of funds also belongs to Congress. Is that a correct statement?
That is the correct statement, Madam Speaker. But then again, I would just like to remind the good gentleman from the First District of Albay that this fund, as correctly as categorically stated by the Supreme Court, is a public fund and not a fund which belongs to the coconut farmers in their private capacity, Madam Speaker. And so therefore, when we dispose of the utilization of this fund as a public fund, then it is the best judgment of the committee that this that we should not allocate percentages of this fund, how much percentage to be used for the development of the coconut industry, and how much percentage should be used for the coconut farmers, because in totality, the development of the coconut industry would redound, would redound specifically to the benefit of the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker.
No. Funds are divisible, and they are allocated in accordance to priorities. That is why when the Supreme Court said that these are public funds, and the two beneficiaries for the utilization of the funds would be the coconut farmers and the abaca industry, there are only two beneficiaries identified by the Supreme Court.
Madam Speaker, if I read the decision of the Supreme Court, it did not say that the funds is divisible into two beneficiaries. What the Supreme Court said is that the fund is a public fund and should be used for the development of the coconut industry for the benefit for the benefit of the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker.
Well, as we said and agreed, the Supreme Court did not identify the allocation of the funds between the two beneficiaries. It left to Congress the full discretion how to allocate the funds between the two beneficiaries. That is why as a social justice legislation, then there should be reasonable and justified bias in favor of coconut farmers. So it is opportune for this Congress to make the necessary allocation and prioritization. Now, let me go to the development of the coconut industry. With respect to the development of the coconut industry, this is an obligation of government with or without the existence of the cocoa levy funds. Is that a correct statement?
Madam Speaker, the development of the coconut industry, of course, is left to the agency of the government, but again, this cocoa levy fund is the should be taken as a complementary to all the funds that that would be given by the different agencies of government for the development of the coconut industry. So this fund is in complement to those other funds to be given by the government, Madam Speaker.
Now, let me just trace the history of PCA, and its mandate and its mandate to develop the abaca, no, the coconut industry. When was PCA established, Your Honor?
The, the PCA was established, created under PD 414 on April eighteen nineteen seventy-four, Madam Speaker.
I think the PCA was established on June thirty nineteen seventy-three under PD number two three two. Is that a more correct statement?
Madam Speaker, PD four one four was the, I mean, PD four one four dated April eighteen nineteen seventy-four, amended PD through two three two, which, PD two three, two three two created the Philippine Coconut Authority, Madam Speaker, but it was amended by PD four one four, Madam Speaker.
My, my question is, when was the creation of PCA, of the Philippine Coconut Authority? It was created on June thirty nineteen seventy-three under PD number two three two. I am not asking for the amendments to that PD.
That is, that is correct, Madam Speaker.
Okay. Then, PD number two three two was substantially amended by PD fourteen sixty-eight on June eleven nineteen seventy-eight, which established the PCA charter. Is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Speaker. PD fourteen sixty-eight on June eleven nineteen seventy-eight, or otherwise known as the Revised Coconut Industry Code, Madam Speaker.
But the government's concern in the development of the coconut industry antedated the creation of the Philippine Coconut Authority. In fact, the National Coconut Corporation, NACOCO, was created to promote the growth and development of the coconut industry. Would the distinguished gentleman know when NACOCO was created? Can I volunteer the information? That NACOCO was created in nineteen forty.
It was created in August one nineteen forty-six, Madam Speaker, Republic Act Number Five, Madam Speaker.
And then, NACOCO became the Philippine Coconut Administration, or PhilKoa, with the same function and responsibilities, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor. And that was in nineteen fifty-four. Ten years later, it expanded its scope of operations and renamed as the Philippine Coconut Research Institute, PhilKorin, an agency created to monitor, evaluate, and conduct researches on the coconut. And then, in nineteen seventy-one, at the height of the period of expansion, the Coconut Coordinating Council, CCC, was created in view of PhilKorin and was tasked to supervise, coordinate, and evaluate the implementation of the Coconut Subsufficiency Program of the government. Would the distinguished gentleman confirm this?
I confirm, Madam Speaker.
In nineteen seventy-three, since agencies lack singleness in its purpose and the framework upon which they operated did not resolve, did not revolve around the total development of the coconut industry, the government deemed it necessary to create an agency that would address the situation. Thus, the Philippine Coconut Authority was created in June thirty nineteen seventy-three by virtue of PD number two three two. It absorbed and assumed the powers and functions, including the personnel and assets of the, of the then-defunct PCC, PhilKoa, and PhilKorin. Is that an accurate historical narration of the genesis of the Philippine Coconut Authority? Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor?
Madam Speaker, the Presidential decree number two three two, two three two was indeed signed on June thirty nineteen seventy-three. As to whether or not it took all the assets and all the functions of the NACOCO, PhilKorin, and the, the other coconut agency at that time, Madam Speaker, I, I, with indulgence of the gentleman from Albay, I would not know, Madam Speaker. But then again, the, it is true that PD two three two, creating the Philippine Coconut Authority, was signed and became law on June thirty nineteen seventy-three, Madam Speaker.
Most probably, a reading of PD number two three two would attest to the absorption of the powers and functions of the defunct CCC, PhilKoa, and PhilKorin. On, uh, in nineteen eighty-seven, more particularly, January thirty nineteen eighty-seven, pursuant to Executive Order one one six, the Philippine Coconut Authority was officially declared as an attached agency of the Department of Agriculture. Is this correct? Distinguished sponsor?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Then, by virtue of Executive Order Number one six five, issued on May fifteen twenty fourteen, the Philippine Coconut Authority, the National Food Authority, National Irrigation Administration, and fertilizer and pesticide authority were transferred from the Department of Agriculture to the Office of the President.
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Then, on June thirty twenty sixteen, pursuant to Executive Order Number zero one, the Philippine Coconut Authority was one of the twelve agencies placed under the supervision of the Office of the Cabinet Secretary. Is this correct?
Yes, that is correct, Madam Speaker.
I am tracing, Madam Speaker, distinguished gentleman, the genesis of the Philippine Coconut Authority, just to impress that for the longest time, the government has been concerned with the development of the coconut industry. Meanwhile, the cocoa farmers remain impoverished and even during martial law, an impulse was levied on them supposedly to contribute to government coffers. Would the distinguished gentleman know, from nineteen forty, with the creation of the National Cocoa Coconut Corporation, up to today, under the auspices of the Philippine Coconut Authority, how much billions of pesos had been allocated by the government for the development of the coconut industry?
Madam Speaker, I would want to, to answer the, the, the query of the good gentleman, the good gentleman from Albay. But unfortunately, we do not have the amount of the billions of, or how many, how much has the government has allocated to the, the development of the coconut industry? And if the good gentleman would, would give us some time, then we will submit to his office, Madam Speaker.
Well, I, I would appreciate that, Madam Speaker. Because this is very important just to show that for the longest time, the government has been appropriating tremendous sums of money to develop the coconut industry. And when the bonanza came on the utilization of the cocoa levy funds, here again, the government would like to allocate an unidentified portion of the cocoa levy fund for the development of the coconut industry. That is why I was advocating that there should be a bias, a reasonable and warranted bias in favor of the coconut farmers. That is why I was saying that most probably this Congress in its discretion should be able to allocate eighty percent of the cocoa levy funds in favor of the farmers as a direct benefit and twenty percent, again, to the development of the coconut industry, where the farmers will only have indirect benefits. So, at the proper time, Madam Speaker, I will introduce the necessary amendments. Because I cannot understand what rhyme or reason did the committee entertain by not prioritizing the cocoa farmers in the allocation of the funds? I am not saying that we should not give to the, the development of the cocoa industry. I am just saying that a good majority of the funds should be to the cocoa farmers who have waited so long to utilize these cocoa levy funds almost or more than forty years.
Madam Speaker, if I would read section twenty-one of the proposed bill, because with the provision of section twenty-one, the concern of the good gentleman from Albay would be directly answered, Madam Speaker. Because in the formulation of the Coconut Industry Development Plan, okay, the focus is given to the benefit of the farmers, coconut farmers, Madam Speaker. Because the, the committee which shall, which shall establish the plan shall be guided by the following objectives as enumerated in the, in section twenty-one of, of the proposed bill, Madam Speaker. And letter A is to increase the income of coconut farmers and increase coconut productivity, including intercropping and livestock raising. Letter B, establishment of coconut-based enterprises, including integrated processing of coconut products and downstream products. And C, rehabilitation and modernization of the coconut industry. D, establishment of social protection program that directly benefit coconut farmers and farm worker, farm workers. In case the social protection programs are not funded by an appropriations law or by any other special law or where funding is insufficient, the social protection program shall include, one, the so, social services, services such as life, medical, and accident insurance coverage of the coconut farmers. Number two, scholarships for the benefit of the deserving descendants of the coconut farmers. And three, livelihood programs of the coconut farmers. So, in, in, in the development of the plan, Madam Speaker, so much is directed to the direct benefit of the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker.
But, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, does section twenty-one specify how much funds should be allocated as direct benefits to the cocoa farmers under the cocoa farmers and industry development plan?
It did not, Madam Speaker. But the whole objective of this, of section twenty-one is for the plan to, to, I mean, for the coconut farmers to become the direct beneficiary of the coconut industry development plan, Madam Speaker.
Are we to understand, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, that in the preparation of the cocoa farmers and industry development plan, the full discretion is given to the particular agency, the ad hoc committee in the allocation of the funds without any guidance or parameters from the Congress?
Madam Speaker, as the, as section twenty, I mean, as section twenty-one is crafted, Madam Speaker, the preparation of the coconut farmers and industry development plan is given to the ad hoc committee, which is composed of the different secretaries of the different agencies of the government and nine representatives from the farmers' group and two representatives from the coconut industry sector, Madam Speaker.
But this ad hoc committee is given full one hundred percent discretion on the prioritization of the funds? Because Congress did not specify any parameters or guidelines.
That is correct, Madam Speaker. As it is worded in the proposed bill, Madam Speaker. But the ad hoc committee has all the, the powers and can set the parameters as regards the utilization of the fund in accordance with the plan to be, to be, the, the plan which is to be made by the members of the ad hoc committee, which includes, Madam Speaker, nine representatives from the farmers' group, Madam Speaker.
Is this preparation of the cocoa farmers and industry development plan granted to the ad hoc committee a delegation of legislative powers?
Madam Speaker, what is, what is the, what is the delegated here? Is the preparation of the plan, Madam Speaker?
Yeah. Well, not only the preparation of the plan, but the allocation of funds. But since this is a delegated authority, I think the Congress should set up the necessary parameters and guidelines to make such delegation constitutional and legal.
Madam Speaker, we have already set the parameters and guidelines as to the proper utilization and disposition of the funds. In fact, the, the, this proposed House bill, as it is crafted, shall make the fund as a perpetual fund. And so therefore, the, out of the seventy-five billion fund, only ten billion as a jumpstart fund will be used for the development of the coconut industry and for the benefit of the coconut farmers. And for the succeeding years, only the trust, I mean, only the income of the trust fund shall be used, Madam Speaker.
We should not be under to other provisions, Madam Chairman, distinguished sponsor? The distinguished sponsor cited section twenty-one. That, that's why I'm asking the questions with respect to section twenty-one. And under section twenty-one, the Congress is delegating to the ad hoc committee the preparation of cocoa farmers and the, and industry development plan. There are two aspects, cocoa farmers and industry development plan. But the Congress in this bill has failed to make necessary parameters and guidelines on how much should go to the direct benefits of coconut farmers and how much should go to the development of the coconut industry.
Madam Speaker, as this House bill is crafted, the, the committee did not take into consideration as to whether how much percentage of the fund should go to the, to the, the direct benefit of the farmer. to the direct benefit of the farmers and how much percentage of the fund should go to the development of the coconut industry. What the committee had in mind was that the fund should be taken as a whole for the benefit of the coconut industry and for the development of the coconut industry and for the benefit of the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker. So whatever will be funds that will be used for the development of the coconut industry shall redound to the benefit of the coconut farmers. Because as it is worded, the ad hoc committee shall be guided by the following objectives as enumerated in Section Twenty-One of the proposed House Bill, Madam Speaker.
Well, the objectives for the development plan would cover both the coconut farmers and the development of the coconut industry. Now, will distinguished sponsor be happy? Will he be happy with allocation of eighty percent to the development of the coconut industry and ten percent for the direct benefits of coconut farmers?
As I have already expounded, Madam Speaker, this proposed bill look at the fund as the whole and would not look at the fund as eighty percent for the benefit of the coconut, of the industry, and twenty percent or ten percent for the direct benefit of the coconut farmers. Because we believe that the development of the coconut industry should redound to the benefit of the coconut farmers. Because in the preparation of the plan, the ad hoc committee is already guided that all the, I mean, all the plan should see into it that the benefit of the coconut farmers shall be foremost, Madam Speaker.
But as we have said, Madam Speaker, funds are divisible. Funds should be subject to prioritization. And that is the duty, the obligation of Congress to do. But this bill failed to discharge that duty of Congress to prioritize these funds. May we know why the committee did not prioritize the funds between the coconut farmers and the development of the abaca industry?
Madam Speaker, because the committee looked into the funds as one and single fund, Madam Speaker, and should be used for the benefit of the coconut industry, for the development of the coconut industry and for the benefit of the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker.
As we have said repeatedly, funds are divisible. And it is subject to the full discretion of the Congress to prioritize the utilization of funds. I get receiving the same answer that the committee considered this as one fund, but that fund is divisible. Now, may we know what was the position of the various coconut farmers organizations when this bill was pending before the Committee on Agriculture and Food?
Madam Speaker, the various position of the coconut farmers were already given during, given and discussed during the committee deliberations, Madam Speaker. And some of the farmers even asked that one hundred percent of the fund should be used for the development of the coconut industry. And I did not, looking into the records, Madam Speaker, we have not come across on any position paper dividing the fund for the development of the coconut industry and for the, I mean, for the benefit of the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker.
Well, it is not important that there was a recommendation on the prioritization. The committee itself should have prioritized the funds which are divisible.
We have already prioritized the fund for the benefit of the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker.
No, the committee, this bill has not prioritized the funds. Because under the bill, there is no prioritization between the two beneficiaries, the coconut farmers and the coconut industry.
Madam Speaker, in the formulation of the Coconut Industry Development Plan, I mean, under Section Twenty-One, the members of the ad hoc committee is guided by the objectives that benefit should redound to the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker.
Walangan prioritization na inagay eh. When you prioritize, you say how much should go to one sector? How much should go to the other sector? There is no such prioritization.
Prioritization does not only, okay? Does not only entail how much percentage would go to the coconut industry and how much percentage would go to the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker.
That is not prioritization if you don't divide the funds between the beneficiaries. Because no less than the Supreme Court did not make the prioritization because it gave to the Congress that discretion to make the prioritization.
Madam Speaker, the Supreme Court decision categorically stated...
Paulit-ulit na lang ang sagot natin. I have heard that a thousand times.
That the fund should be used for the development of the coconut industry in trust for the coconut farmers, for the benefit of the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker.
Let me go to another topic, Madam Speaker. Si paulit-ulit na lang sagot.
Paulit-ulit din 'yung tanong, Madam Speaker.
No, hindi paulit-ulit ang tanong. I am just impressing on the distinguished chairman that the bill is not correct because it failed to prioritize these funds.
Madam Speaker, this bill already approved by the fifty-five members of the Committee on Agriculture. Okay, we are now debating on the plenary and I don't see the reason why the gentleman from Albaye said that this bill is wrong, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, the mere fact that this has the imprimatur of the committee does not mean to say that it is perfect. That is why we have this plenary session in order to...
It does not mean that the bill is wrong, Madam Speaker.
I have the floor, Mr. Speaker. That's why we have this plenary debates in order to introduce perfecting amendments after we have debated. Now, let me go to the Declaration of Policy. May we know what is the Declaration of Policy as provided for in House Bill Number Fifty-seven Forty-five?
Madam Speaker, the Declaration of Policy is stated in Section Two of the proposed House Bill, Madam Speaker.
Yes, can we have that read for the purpose of the members of this house?
If Madam Speaker would allow me to read Section Two, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed, Chairman.
Section Two, Declaration of Policy. It is hereby declared the policy of the state to pursue and attain the balance, equitable, integrated, and sustainable growth and development of the coconut industry. Towards this end, the state shall adopt the necessary measures to immediately address the serious problems besetting the coconut industry, protect the socioeconomic well-being of the coconut farmers, and ensure that the benefits due to coconut farmers, especially the poor and marginalized under various statutes, shall be consolidated and their delivery expedited. Any measure or program undertaken in accordance with this act shall only be deemed complementary to and shall not be a replacement for existing and potential coconut development programs already conducted by other government agencies, Madam Speaker.
How does this Declaration of Policy compare to the Senate Bill with respect to Declaration of Policy?
Madam Speaker, can I ask the good gentleman to repeat his question?
How does the Declaration of Policy under Section Two of House Bill Number Fifty-seven Forty-five compare with the Declaration of Policy in the Senate version?
Madam Speaker, I would like to take time and check because there are various Senate Bills being taken into consideration in the Senate, Madam Speaker.
Is there already an approved version in the Senate?
Madam Speaker, I have here with me the committee report of Senate Bill Number One-Two-Three-Three. This is the... Senate Bill Number One-Two-Three-Three in substitution of Senate Bills Number Fifty-two, Sixty-four, One-Three-Nine, Six-Six-Nine, and Nine-Three-Four. Under Section Two, Declaration of Policy, it is hereby declared that the policy of the state to consolidate the benefits due to coconut farmers, especially the poor and marginalized under various statutes, and to expedite the delivery thereof to attain a balance, equitable, integrated, and sustainable growth and development of the coconut industry, Madam Speaker. That is how the Declaration of Policy is worded in the Senate Bill Number One-Two-Three-Three, Madam Speaker.
Is that, may I know from the distinguished sponsor whether the Senate has already approved their own version?
Not yet, Madam Speaker. That's, I mean, as far as the cocoa levy bill is concerned, it's not yet approved in the Senate, Madam Speaker.
So likewise, the Senate version is still pending, just like this bill?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
But you would notice the bias, the justifiable bias in favor of the coconut farmers in the Declaration of Policy in the Senate version. Now, may we know whether during the Sixteenth Congress, a similar bill had already been approved on third reading by this chamber?
Madam Speaker, a similar bill was tackled during the Sixteenth Congress, but it did not pass third reading, Madam Speaker. In the House of Representatives, Madam Speaker, it passed third reading, but in the Senate, it did not reach third reading, Madam Speaker.
It passed third reading in this House. I was a member of the Sixteenth Congress, but I am informed that it passed on third reading. May we know, as passed on third reading, what was the definition of cocoa farmer?
Madam Speaker, the House Bill Number Six-One-Three-Five was the bill entitled an Act Establishing Coconut Farmers and Industry Trust Fund and Providing for Its Management and Utilization, passed on third reading during the Sixteenth Congress. And in Section Three thereof, under the definition of terms, coconut farmers refer to farmer, owner of coconut farm which is not more than five hectares who tills the land or does not till the land but has control and supervision over the cultivation, Madam Speaker.
Now, may we know, Madam Speaker, distinguished gentleman, why the provision of not more than five hectares in the definition of a coconut farmer does not appear anymore in House Bill Number Five-Seven-Four-Five, the bill we are discussing?
Madam Speaker, as I espoused that on the first day of the interpolation, the definition of coconut farmers was, I mean, the phrase... The phrase "which is not more than five hectares" was taken out on House Bill Five-Seven-Four-Five because of two reasons, Madam Speaker. Because if we trace back the exaction of the cocoa levy fund, it was imposed on the sale of copra. It did not distinguish whether or not a farmer is the owner of five, three, or more than five hectares. That the levy was exacted on the first sale or the sale of copra produced, Madam Speaker. And number two, in the decision of the Supreme Court, the court did not distinguish the beneficiary of, as coconut farmers, whether or not they are owners of five hectares or owners of more than five hectares, Madam Speaker. And we deliberated this very lengthily on the committee level and we voted upon. And fortunately or unfortunately, this... The definition of coconut farmers as worded in House Bill Five-Seven-Four-Five was adopted by the committee, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, distinguished gentleman, when you say fortunately or unfortunately, this definition without the hectarage has been approved by the committee, why do you say unfortunately?
Because, Madam Speaker, we have, some of the members of the committee would have wanted to place, I mean, to include or to exclude in the definition of coconut farmers, those coconut farmers owning more than five hectares. And of course, some of the members of the committee would want to exclude, would not want to make any distinction, Madam Speaker. So, in the final deliberation of the committee, there are many, as much as, many, I mean, as many members of the committee that, who would want not to make any distinction of coconut farmers as to the number of hectarages they own, Madam Speaker.
Well, a so-called coconut farmer who owns ten hectares will be a direct beneficiary of this bill when it becomes a law.
Madam Speaker, again, I would like to state once again that the fund should be used for the development of the coconut industry and for the benefit of the coconut farmers, Madam Speaker. And so, I would not, I would not, I would not understand if a farmer who owns more than ten hectares would not be a stakeholder in the coconut industry, Madam Speaker.
Now, my question is, a supposed coconut farmer who owns twenty hectares will be a beneficiary of this bill once it becomes a law?
Of course, Madam Speaker, because he is stakeholder of the coconut industry. And so therefore, a farmer owning ten, five, three would be in parity with respect to the development of the coconut industry, Madam Speaker. But for the benefit, for example, for scholarship programs, Madam Speaker, maybe the farmer owning one hundred hectares and farmer owning less than five hectares. Of course, the beneficiary of the scholarship program under this fund should favor those farmers owning less than five hectares, Madam Speaker. But as far as being a stakeholder in the coconut industry, a farmer owning one hundred hectare, fifty hectare, ten hectare, and less than five hectare stands in parity with the others, Madam Speaker.
And going farther, a supposed coconut farmer who owns twenty hectares will be a beneficiary of this bill once it becomes a law. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
I thought this bill is a social justice legislation, which means to say that it should favor the less fortunate, the marginalized sector, like the poor farmers who would own less than ten, less than five hectares. So if you extend the benefits to suppose coconut farmers owning ten, twenty, thirty hectares, then the social, the social justice impact of this legislation is lost, Mr. Speaker. Now let me go.
Madam Speaker... Madam Speaker, can I interject, Madam Speaker? I would just like to put it on record, Madam Speaker, that farmers owning less than 5 hectares comprise 90% of the total number of coconut farmers in the Philippines, Madam Speaker.
I don't care about the 90%, what I am concerned about is giving benefits to the 10% who are not supposed to get direct benefits from this measure. May we know, distinguished sponsor, what is the version of the Senate with respect to the definition of a coconut farmer?
Madam Speaker, the Senate has not yet come out with the final draft, Madam Speaker. What I have here is a committee report, Madam Speaker. So if the gentleman would agree, that I will read his inquiry by using this draft, Madam Speaker, I would be gladly to answer him, Madam Speaker.
Yes, Madam Speaker.
May I ask the good gentleman from Albay to please repeat his question, Madam Speaker?
I thought the distinguished sponsor was about to answer my question. The question is, what is the version of the Senate with respect to the definition of a coconut farmer?
I have already read a while ago, Madam Speaker. The Senate version defines coconut farmers as... Madam Speaker, as I was looking at the Senate version, the Senate version failed to include the definition of coconut farmers, Madam Speaker.
Does the definition in the Senate include or does it include a cap on the hectarages?
Madam Speaker, what I have here are two versions of the draft of the Senate. So, as I have said earlier, if the good gentleman would allow me to read the two versions of the Senate Bill, Madam Speaker.
Now, all I'm asking whether any of those versions would include or not include a cap on the hectarages?
Madam Speaker, the Senate Bill, as annexed to the committee report, did not include the definition of a coconut farmer, Madam Speaker. However, I have here a copy as of March 15, 2017, Madam Speaker, which includes the definition of a coconut farmer, Madam Speaker, which defines coconut farmer as an owner of a coconut farm that is more than 5 hectares. However, Madam Speaker, as I have stated earlier, I do not know which version of this draft is officially being deliberated on the Senate floor, Madam Speaker.
We will have to check on that, because my impression, the Senate definition does not include a cap, or includes a cap of not more than 5 hectares. Now, and I would like also to find out whether the Senate has already approved their version on third reading. We will have to check on that also. Now, with respect to Section 10, Designation of the Bureau of Treasury as Depository of the Trust Fund, it says here, the second sentence, the second paragraph says, "The committee may designate alternative depository funds, banks, which shall perform the same functions as that of the BTR, Bureau of Treasury, may designate alternative depository banks." Is the committee given the full discretion in designating alternative depository banks?
Madam Speaker, as it is worded, the committee is given the power to designate alternative depository banks, Madam Speaker.
Could the committee designate UCPB as a depository bank?
They can, Madam Speaker.
I suppose, Madam Speaker, there is need to make a clear guidance to the committee, which banks can be designated as depository banks. At the proper time, I think, we should be given the opportunity to make the necessary amendments. Because I think the UCPB, which was a party to the Coco Levy imposition and utilization, should not be a depository bank. I have more questions, Madam Speaker, but there are certain items we'll have to check. And I am also waiting for the submission of the distinguished gentleman with respect to the total funds allocated by the government through the Philippine, through the various agencies, which were mandated to develop the coconut industry. So particularly the Philippine Coconut Authority and its predecessors. So may I request for a suspension to another date of this interpolation?
Majority Leader.
I am going to repeat that I am not against the utilization of the funds, but I suppose there is need to rationalize the utilization of the funds.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend session.
Motion approved. Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Mr. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill 5745, as contained under Committee Report Number 262 submitted by Committee on Agriculture and Food and Committee on Appropriations. So move.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of Congressman Batawil, who are seated at the gallery at the moment. These are General Victor Ibrado AFP, former AFP Chief of Staff, General Alexander Yan, former AFP Chief of Staff, General Avellino Razon, former PNP Chief, General Jose Antonio Salvacion, Rear Admiral Ramon Punzalan, Vice Admiral Emilio Marayag Jr., General Restituto Mosqueda, Police Director Van Luspo, Chairman President of the PNP Retirees Association Incorporated, and the members of the PNP Retirees Association Incorporated, and from the Philippine National Police, Police Deputy Director General Archie Francisco F. Gamboa, the Chief Directorial Staff, Police Director Jose Maria Victor Ramos, Directorate for Logistics, Police Director Efren Perez, Directorate for Research and Development, Police Senior Superintendent Robert Rodriguez, and Police Chief Superintendent Alfred Corpus.
Please rise so that we can acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Batawil. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, today being a Monday, and pursuant to our rules, I move that we open the Privilege Hour.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Privilege Hour is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, I now move that the gentleman from the Second District of Pangasinan, the Honorable Congressman Paul Batawil, be recognized to avail of the Privilege Hour.
The Honorable Leopoldo N. Batawil from the Second District of Pangasinan is hereby recognized. May we inquire on the subject of the Honorable Batawil's speech?
Madam Speaker, it's about the pension arrears of the PNP retirees.
Thank you. Kindly proceed, Congressman Batawil.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Honorable members of this chamber, I rise today on a matter of personal and collective privilege to manifest the clamor of the retirees of the Philippine National Police regarding their pension arrears. Today, I dedicate this privileged speech in honor of those who retired from both the PCINP, the PNP, including our brothers from the Armed Forces of the Philippines. Some of them are here with us today, and including those from the different provinces of Luzon, those from Visayas and Mindanao wanted to come over, but sad to say that due to hardship and lack of funds, they opted to monitor the proceedings today. May I ask one more time for them to be recognized, to stand up together with the Pangasinan Police Retirees Association who are here with us? Some of them are aging but still strong to manifest their love of country. Thank you. It is sad to note that as I speak, many of them are in their sickbed, and some of them already passed away, awaiting for the pension increase that they deserve for the many years of dedicated service that they have rendered. Their ill feelings towards this government, past and present, have been brewing to a boiling point, but they managed to keep their professionalism, love of country above self. It prevailed over their sentiment. To serve and protect, that is the motto that all policemen all over the country, active or retired, dead or alive, live up to. Always outnumbered, but never outvowed. To this day, that PC Ranger motto reverberates in the hearts of those who are here with us today. And again, I say, many of them cannot make it here anymore due to various illnesses, and some of them succumb to the hardships of life. The PNP and our AFP have been given the monumental task of protecting the nation from external and internal threats. They keep our communities safe, and they are willing to risk their lives for others to live. Given the magnitude of terrorism, criminality, and the viciousness of crimes being committed, the organization has stepped up to meet the challenge despite budgetary constraints and meager resources. That policeman, that soldier, when he steps out of his house to carry out his duty, his family would never know if he ever comes back alive. Tomorrow, August 8, is a historically important day for the Philippine National Police. On the same date, in 1901, the Insular Constabulary was established through Commission Act Number 175 with Captain Henry T. Allen as their first chief. This organization became the forerunner of national policing in our nation. A year after, the Insular Constabulary was renamed as the Philippine Constabulary. Over the years, the need for an integrated approach to address peace, order, and anti-criminality efforts in the local governments spurred the merger of the Philippine Constabulary and the Integrated National Police. On August 8, 1975, by virtue of Presidential Decree Number 765, these two institutions were merged to form the PCINP. After the First People Power, the new constitution provided for a national police force. So, on January 29, 1991, Republic Act Number 656... Republic Act Number 6975 was enacted, which abolished the PCINP. In its place, created the Philippine National Police or the PNP. Every year thereafter, on August 8, the PNP celebrates the police service anniversary. May mga hindi magagandang balitang lumalabas tungkol sa mga pulis, at sa halip na pagkatiwalaan, takot at pangamba ang nangingibabaw. Marami, mararimang mas madaling paniwalaan ang mga ganitong kwento. Sa tuwing manunood, umakikinig tayo ng balita para bagang madalas na may balita tungkol sa mga pulis na nasasangkot sa mga gawaing hindi kanais-nais. Ngunit, huwag nating kalimutan na wala namang perpektong institusyon kahit saan. Bagamat, may mga ganitong balita, huwag din nating kalimutan na mas maraming mga mabubuting pulis. Hindi man natin sila nakikita sa balita, may mga kababayan naman nating nakakasaksi sa kanilang mga ginagawang kabutihan na minsan ay labas sa kanilang trabaho. At tulad nung isang foundation, Metro Bank Foundation in particular, binibigyan ng recognition ang mga pulis sa buong bansa sa pamamagitan ng kanilang countries outstanding police in service na taon-taon ay atin pong binibigyan sila dito ng parangal. Atin pong tingnan ang isang halimbawa ng mga pulis na nagsisilbi ng higit sa kanilang nakatakdang gawaing sa trabaho. At kung mamaurapatin po ninyo, nandyan po ang mga katibayan sa dalawang screen na natin na sa ating harapan. Dito ay makikita natin ang ibat-ibang kwento ng kabayanihan at paninilbihan ng mga pulis na hindi natin karaniwang nababalitaan. Makikita natin sa mga larawang ito, ang ibat-ibang pulis mula sa ibat-ibang bahagi ng bansa na pinararangalan. Hindi man sila mabigyan ng papuri sa pamamagitan ng trophy, laki, o mga magarbong award. Pero nakikita natin ng mga mamamayan ang kanilang kabayanihan sa kanilang pagsisilbi ng tapat. Lahat sila ay tumutulong sa kapwa ng walang hinintay na kapalit o papuri mula sa iba. There are also police officers who have made headlines because of their bravery and exemplary actions. One of them is PO2 Ryan Cabansag, who was awarded the PNP Heroism Medal. While traveling in a bus along NLEX, he responded to a robbery that was being perpetrated by three armed suspects. Despite the threat to life, he still performed his sole duty to serve and protect. Senior Inspector Rodrigo de Jos was another officer named. He helped a blooded 81-year-old man who was lying under a bridge. An identified officer, who was photographed helping a man on a wheelchair, also gathered a lot of praise on social media. There is also PO2 Halandoni, who shelled out his own money to help an elderly lady pay her medical bills in San Lazaro Hospital. Sometimes, however, we hear stories about police officers who go above and beyond the call of duty. There are those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of dedicated service and love for country. Recently, we heard about the police officers in Negros Oriental who died on duty because they were ambushed by the NPA. In order to protect the citizens of their locality, these policemen made the ultimate sacrifice. We also know the story of the PNP Special Action Forces, who were killed in action in Mamasapano. The SAF-44, as they were popularly known, stands as beacon of hope and inspiration to those who serve the nation. As I speak today, our soldiers and policemen are still in Marawi. Ninety of our police officers and soldiers have already offered the ultimate sacrifice. We are praying that this war will not claim any more lives, but our policemen and soldiers will keep on defending Marawi and will stay there until the mission is accomplished. There are many more stories like the ones I have mentioned. In this age of likes and shares, it is easier now to see the silver linings on social media because of citizen journalism. The things that our news media may not be able to capture, our citizens take care and share with us through the digital platform. So let us continue loving and caring and understanding our policemen and our soldiers, especially those who are already retired but not yet tired. And I include here with our own colleagues, Congressman Amadis Pino Jr., Congressman Romeo Akok. And for Congressman Amadis Pino Jr., he almost lost his life in Kirino Province when in a fierce encounter with the New People's Army there at. But he survived, and on record, he captured Joma Sison in a classic intelligence operations. Congressman Romeo Akok, one of the best investigators of the PCINP and best director of the PNP CIDG, and one of the best interpolators of Congress, I suppose. He was charged in an operation against the so-called Coratong Baliling, if you recall. No? Coratong Baliling was at its, uh... notoriety at the time when they were encountered by the group of now Congressman Romeo Akok. That group was initially neutralized by government forces after a series of bank robbery holdup and other crimes. Twenty-five PNP SAF troopers were charged in that Paranyaki-Mervil subdivision encounter. If you recall, in 2008, the so-called Ware Warai and the Ilongo Kidnap Purason Group, I was one of them as the former Regional Director of NCRPO. We were charged by the Human Rights and the DOJ as a result of a legitimate encounter. But thank God, we were able to legally extricate ourselves from that problem. And those twenty-five SAF troopers, who were initially incarcerated, are now back on duty and still continuing the resolve to serve this country. Our police officers and our soldiers put their lives on the line to do their jobs. They invest blood, sweat, and tears to perform the call of duty. And as such, they deserve to be compensated justly for the sacrifices they make. This is why it is with great disappointment that I informed this august body that our government owes the PNP retirees 26 months of pension differential. This is certainly a poor way to repay those who have put their lives at stake to serve the country. In 2009, the Salary Standardization Law was enacted, thereby giving all government employees, including uniform personnel, an increase in their pay. This increase was implemented in four tranches. The standard... The Salary Standardization Law also adjusted the pension rates pursuant to the automatic indexation stated in Republic Act Number 8551. Those in the active service and retired during this time are supposed to receive pension according to the prescribed rate. However, due to the nonavailability of appropriations for pension adjustment at the time of the salary increase, the funds have not yet been released to the PNP retirees. The DBM explained that the policy they are adopting in the payment of pension adjustments is to apply the same uniform effective date of the succeeding year when the increases are mandated to active personnel. Thus, pension adjustments were only implemented on the succeeding year. That is the second tranche, after the grant of the base pay adjustment of police personnel in active service. To date, 26 months of unpaid pensions for the PNP retirees amounted to 3,839,637,000. This is the accumulated amount from the months that were left unpaid when the SSL was implemented. For their pensions to be withheld due to a lack of funding, sends the message that we do not value their efforts and sacrifices. When the government is unable to pay their dues, we send the message to our people, and not just those in the uniformed service, that serving this country is a thankless job or a wasted endeavor. But look, my dear colleagues, the retirees are out there all over the country, still helping the active members of the organization, both the PNP and the AFP, in their own capacity. Mister Speaker, my dear colleagues, as we celebrate the 116 years of police service in this country, I seek your support in the adoption of House Resolution Number 117, 1117, which I authored. This resolution urges the DBM and the DILG to release immediately the amount of 3.8 billion pension differential of the retirees of the PNP in the 2018 national budget, and to expedite its immediate release to the pensioners. And better still, if it can be done now or within the year, for both PNP and AFP retirees to avail while they are still alive, and not when they are already in the kingdom come. Mister Speaker, I end my speech by way of sharing you a video on the life of a policeman entitled "Ang Tatayko Pulis." May I ask the technical support to play the video "Ang Tatayko Pulis"? Can we have the video, please? If you will hear the video with each audio, you will appreciate more what it is and how it is to be a policeman. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much, our dear colleagues.
Majority Leader.
Mister Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the honorable gentleman from Buay Party List, Congressman Lee Totianza, for his interpolation.
The Honorable Totianza is recognized. On what subject would the Honorable gentleman speak?
We would like to elaborate further and support the call of the gentleman, Congressman Batawil, on a very, very important, critical issue of not supporting our retirees enough. The gentleman made a very, very serious call, and I'd like to respond and support the call of Congressman Batawil.
Please proceed.
With the permission of gentleman, I would like to clarify further on his proposal to allocate enough funds for the full payment of the delayed pensions of our police officers.
Yes, Your Honor.
Magkano po ba ang total pondong iniisip ninyo kailangan?
Yung pong amount na kailangan po ay 3.8 billion po, Your Honor, sir.
3.8 billion, tama po 'yan?
Opo, at ito po ay kabuwan ng apat na tranches na hindi pa po naibibigay.
Considering that these gentlemen are now retired and are helplessly waiting, the congressman's call merits all of our support. Although I see a minimal number of members now on the floor, we should repeat this tomorrow when we have more members on the floor. I remember the golden years of the policeman in Manila, for instance, where he was the most respected, he was the peacekeeper, he was the harmony man, siya po ang tumutulong sa nangangailangan, at siya po inaasahan ng lahat at siya po inaasahan ng lahat sa mga problemang panglipunan. Sapagkat tapos maglingkod ng dalawang, limang taon, na tatlong taon, eh makakalimutan natin, hindi po tama 'yan. That's the reason why I am full support of your appeal, and I hope the twenty or so members on the floor now also gets affected by the same sentiment. Our police officers need all the support and encouragement and inspiration and motivation so that they will continue even beyond the years of their service. Now that they're retired, they can even devote more time for their fellowmen. And I heard loud and clear the statements of Congressman Batawil, "Our policemen are most of the time outnumbered, but never outfought." And in Manila, we even have a big, big saying that reminds all, all of us Manilaans, growing up in the city of Manila. When you pass the Manila Police Department Headquarters, you will read the famous words before the Battle of Termopila was fought. "Go spread the word, tell the passersby that in this little world, men knew how to die." Kaya ako'y natutuwa nung nariniko si Congressman Batawil being an ex-police officer himself, reflects the genuine truth about our police officers. If some of them are going alright, going the wrong way, that is not the police organization, that's not the civilian police special. Temporarily, they may be lost in their inspirational direction. But I know very well that the retired policemen who served in yesterday's years do not commit the same abuses of the people. And to get them harnessed again once more in nation building, we should encourage them by giving them their due. Let's fight for that small amount which is meaningful if we are to encourage our young policemen to do better than how they are behaving today. And the inspiration should come from the reinforcement of feeling that we do care for them as we care for their elders. 3.8 billion! This administration should not say, "We have no money for that." We know very well, we're reviewing what the budget is being proposed today. We know very well how the budget was spent last year and spent this year. The Nganilan Agastson, 600 billion. Congressman Batawil, are you aware of that?
My understa-
They did not spend 600 billion so far.
477 billion unspent for the year, for that previous year.
And we're only asking for 3.8 billion.
Yes, Your Honor.
That's a drop in the bucket. If all of us remaining here today and hearing the message of Congressman Batawil, I think we should all be one voice in the committee deliberations on the budget. And if they fail to act on that, let us incorporate that in the plenary. Listening to Congressman Batawil, I am committing myself fully in whatever small measure I can to do justice to our police retirees. I have not forgotten the tragedy of Mamassapano. Sino po pinatay doon? Sino po ang ala na buhay doon? Sino po isinuburo? Mahahabata ang police special action force. Men who specially trained to protect society. Up to now, no one has been made to suffer the consequences of how we lost forty-four lives of men of the PNP Special Action Force in that big glaring neglect of the welfare and the lives of our policemen. And I salute them for that because I know ninety-nine percent of policemen are imbued with heroic motivation. So let us take care of those who are helplessly now stationed in life. Retirees unable to earn more and unable to help themselves. Sino po ang tutulungan nila? Tayo, na meron pang nagagawa para sa ating kapwa. It's not the amount, but the honor, the recognition that we know how to look back and look up to people who serve the country well. And that should be the motivation, Congressman Batawil. I am with you, one thousand percent. Thank you.
Marami salamat po, Your Honor, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Batawil and the interpolation of the Honorable Totianza to the committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action. So move.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, next to avail of the privilege hour is the honorable gentleman from the Second District of Cagayan de Oro City, Representative Maximo B. Rodriguez Jr., to speak on the rehabilitation development of Mindanao. So move.
The Honorable Congressman Maximo B. Rodriguez Jr. is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
My dear chairperson, speaker, my colleagues, I stand here on a matter of personal and collective privilege on the issue on the rehabilitation and development of Mindanao. But before that, we would like to congratulate Congressman Batawil for a very nice presentation and we assure you of our support in the budget deliberations in this year. Congratulations, sir, Congressman. I stand here because we have concerns on the Mindanao problem. Last May twenty-three, this year, joint operation with Armed Forces of the Philippines and Philippine National Police was launched in Marawi City to capture terrorist leader Estelon Hapilon, who is believed to be the Islamic State Iraq and Syria leader in Southeast Asia. In said operation, a firefight between government troops and a Moote group ensued, and a black flag with the logo of ISIS was raised in front of Amay Pacpac Hospital with the goal of establishing a wilayah or a province for the Islamic State. On the same day, martial law was declared for the island of Mindanao. A little over three months after that unfortunate day, firefighting still continues. Despite major headway by our armed forces of the Philippines, there are still terrorists in the Marawi and others, and our soldiers continue to flush out the remaining members of the ISIS, the Moote and other rogue elements. On July twenty-two, two thousand seven, martial law was extended until December two thousand seventeen. The Most Resistant Report of the AEP stated the total number of death now is six hundred seven, with one hundred nineteen of soldiers dying heroically, and four hundred fifty-three terrorists and forty-five civilians with eighty to one hundred hostages inside the mosque. Up to now, one village is already about to be liberated. I wholeheartedly support, I wholeheartedly support our president, Ro Diertti, for his decision to place Mindanao under martial law. And I wholeheartedly support our troops in the fight against terrorists. But while my support remains, there is always be the need to end this conflict as soon as possible. We need to bring back normalcy, not just in Marawi, but also in entire Mindanao. While Moody's has stated that the impact of the crisis on economic activity is expected to be minimal and short-lived, it has also stated that if present developments lead to prolonged uncertainty around security or governance, such a development would eventually dampen business confidence and consequently diminish economic outcomes in Mindanao. As recommended by the Mindanao Development Authority, Marawi's early recovery, rehabilitation, and long-term development will entail the following actions and key recommendations. First, there should be rapid assessment by all government agencies in this country. For instance, it's about time that National Food Authority, National Housing Authority recognizes the need to establish a temporary shelter for all the evacuees in Iligan and elsewhere. Number two, what is the infrastructure planning through the Mindanao Development Corridors Program? With such as partners, DPWA, Department of Tourism, Department of Transportation, TESA, and other infrastructure agencies. This will identify critical connectivity projects in the whole of Mindanao and specifically a framework for the Northern Mindanao Development Corridor which will cover connection of Marawi to the rest of the corridors. Where is the budget under the National Expansion Program, which will later on become General Appropriations Act? Number three, there should be the establishment of agriculture-economic cooperative zones which will help in providing jobs and livelihoods to the evacuees by the Department of Trade and Industry together with the Department of Labor and Employment. Number four, who shall administer the donations? We need a donors convergence group. The Mindanao Development Authority has already convened the Mindanao Development Corridors Steering Committee and generated initial commitments of support for international development partners such as Asian Development Bank, United States Agency for International Development, USAID, Food and Culture Organization of the United Nations, FAO, International Labor Organizations, ILO, the German Youti Jettsgeschäft International, JZB, or GIZ, World Food Program, FWF, European Union, EU, International Development Program, UNDP, and Jaika, the Japan International Cooperation Agency, in the rehabilitation and reconstruction of Marawi and Lanau areas within the context of the Bangsamoro Development Corridor and the Mindanao Development Corridors in general. Further, there is a need to immediately restore livelihood and economic activities and to long-term connect Marawi to the overall development goals of Mindanao through the development of Mindanao Corridors. We need to immediately implement transport and connectivity projects that would link Marawi with the rest of the Mindanao economy through the establishment of the Bangsamoro Development Corridors, namely, Lanau del Sur, Maranao Development Corridor, Magindanao Development Corridor, the Lupa-Suk Development Corridors, Sulutawitawi, Basilan. And for this, we need the active participation and collaboration of Mindanao Development Authority, DPWA, Department of Transportation, local government units of Marawi and Alde Sur, and the armed regional government. It is recommended that financial institutions promote the opening of a special facility for financing, loan, or compensation for the businesses that were lost in the siege. Islamic financing is especially needed, especially providing capital and enabling the environment for the immediate restoration of economic activities for displaced businesses. For this, we need the active participation and involvement of the Al Amana Islamic Investment Bank of the Philippines, the Land Bank, and the Development Bank of the Philippines. There's also a need of rebuilding trust and renew approaches to countering extreme violent extremism. There's a need to implement social cohesion programs to repair intercultural and interfaith relationships. Implement a campaign to refrain from connoting Islam with violent extremism and to strengthen madrassa education. Also cybersecurity and e-safety mechanisms should be installed to prevent cases of recruitment of the youth via social media platforms. For this, DICT, DepEd, OPAP, and DILG should take the lead. With all these plans and recommendations, one big question is, how much fund is needed to rehabilitize, rehabilitize, and develop Mindanao? This is why we legislators need to be informed of the timeline of the Armed Forces of the Philippines and why it has proven to be difficult to capture these ISIS rebels in Marawi. We also need to be informed the immediate and long-term plans of the Armed Forces of the Philippines and the government on how to have peaceful Mindanao. Aside from the plans of the AEP, we also need to know what other government agencies are planning in helping Thailand recover from the effects of the siege. We need to know what the National Housing Authority plans to do to provide housing to all those who have lost their homes. We need to know how the Department of Social Welfare and Development plans to provide immediate and long-term assistance to the people of Mindanao, especially those displaced. We need to know what and how much the AFP and the PNP need to ensure lasting peace in Mindanao. As a branch of government holding the power of the purse, it is important to know the financial requirements of the government and its agencies in its rehabilitation plan of Marawi and for Mindanao. In these trying times, we need to allocate more resources to Mindanao and to not only rehabilitate displaced affected by terror attacks, but also to support development and growth in the entire Mindanao Island. We in Mindanao have been through many struggles already, and this recent Marawi siege is just another setback for us. As always, we Mindanaanos will continue to rise above and we will back, and we will be back on our feet. But we cannot do it alone. We need the help of our government, which is why I'm here asking the national government and its agencies, including the Armed Forces of the Philippines, to provide us with information we need on their concrete, immediate, and long-term plans, the amount they need to implement these plans and plans on how to maintain peace in Mindanao and make Mindanao which is potential. That ends my privileged speech.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize the honorable gentleman from the First District of Lanau del Norte, Congressman Kalid Dimaporo, for his interpolation.
The Honorable Kalid Dimaporo is recognized. Kindly proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to congratulate my good friend Congressman Maxi Rodriguez for his privileged speech and bringing to the highlight the rehabilitation of Marawi City and our area. My district is right beside Marawi City in Lanau del Norte. The evacuees have spilled over to Balui and Iligan City. I'd like to inform my colleague that during the budget briefing, Secretary Jokno mentioned that Marawi City has 20 billion pesos earmarked for its rehabilitation. On top of that, starting from the month of August, September, October, November, and December, Marawi City has 1 billion a month this year earmarked, total of 5 billion for 2017 and 20 billion for 2018. And I think it's delightful to hear that my colleague is calling for transparency. Because when I speak to my counterparts here in Congress and also my counterparts, the LGUs, we do not know how much and where the funds are being used for. So I think there's a very good need for Congress to be proactive in working with the national line agencies to determine exactly how the funds of government are being used and hopefully will be used effectively that Marawi City will restore its former appearance and former standing in the region and we can bring real development to the people of Marawi and recover from the damaging war that has raging over the last few months. So again, thank you so much, my colleague Maxi Rodriguez, for your privileged speech and bringing to highlight the rehabilitation of Marawi City.
Can I comment on that? Well, that's good that Secretary of Adjet has said that they will give 1 billion pesos a month. But that's all in words. I haven't seen any plan or actual implementation of it. The last time I know is that on the papers, they were rushing for the construction of 1,000 units of trans- what you call this, semi-temporary shelters. 1,000 is good only for about 3,000 because each building will house about three families. And we have about 17,000, 100,000 evacuees. I remember that when we had Sin Dong in Cagayan de Oro, which demolished 12,000 houses. The city government bought lands where foreign donations went into building temporary shelters.
government bought lands where foreign donations went into building temporary shelters. And so it was, it actually gave a chance for our evacuees to be relocated to temporary shelters. We don't need a permanent shelter because it takes so much time. But with this information I have with Congressman Dimaporo, I am calling on DBM to lay out the plan for it because from what I read in the papers, it's just not enough. The purpose of this privileged speech is to make aware of the national agencies concerned, that they should do the evaluation themselves and make plans, concrete plans, transparent plans, for us to know in Congress and for us to be able to sponsor any amendment to the National Expedition Program towards approval of the General Appropriations Act. That is good, 1 billion a month, but it is not enough for the rehabilitation of Mindanao. And so, third person, I would like to thank you and thank you for the comment of participation by my brother, Congressman Dimaporo, and thank you colleagues for this time. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Rodriguez and the interpolation of the Honorable Dimaporo to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that the lady from ACT Teachers Party List, the Honorable Franz Castro, be recognized to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Congresswoman Franz El Castro of the Party List, ACT Teachers, hereby recognized. May I inquire from the distinguished lady on the subject of her privileged speech?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The subject of my privileged speech is on Lumad schools in Mindanao.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Kindly proceed.
Madam Speaker, I rise today on a question of personal and collective privilege as I speak of our indigenous youth's right to education. Lumad is a collective term pertaining to the indigenous peoples living in Mindanao. These tribes have been historically struggling for their ancestral lands and asserting their right to self-determination. For decades, they have been historically fighting against destructive mining, lugging, and other forms of plunder of natural resources in their ancestral lands. It is here in the far-flung communities in Mindanao, hardly reached by education and other basic public services, where Lumads had set up their own community schools. With the help of socio-civic institutions, religious organizations, and the members of the Lumad communities themselves, they have established and maintained alternative systems in their youth rooted within the community's values and culture. To date, there are about 220 alternative schools and programs in Mindanao catering to a total of 8,251 indigenous people's youth. These schools offer a form of transformative and holistic education which educates Lumad people about their human rights, their responsibility to their environment, and stewardship of their ancestral lands. One of the important components of the learning system in the study of sustainable agriculture suitable to their lands. All these are in accordance with Article 14 of the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of the Indigenous Peoples, which states that, and I quote, "Indigenous peoples have the right to establish and control their educational system and institutions providing education in their own languages in a manner appropriate to their culture and methods of teaching and learning." I feel privileged to have personally witnessed how these Lumad schools have been successfully integrating the community's culture and tradition for the development of their socioeconomic welfare. Last April, Congressman Tinho and I attended the second graduation and moving up rites of the Community Technical College of Southeastern Mindanao Incorporated, or the CTCSMI, at Barangay Lapu-Lapu in Mako, Campostela Valley. The Community Technical College is made up of around 70% Lumad students' population coming from 10 tribes from all over Mindanao. It opened last June 2015 with only 37 elementary, 77 high school, and 184 college students. Now, they have more than 200 in preschool to grades, to grade 10, 19 in textbook, and 190 in college. The Alternative Learning Center of Agriculture and Livelihood Development, or the Alcadem Incorporated, offers an alternative learning system for the indigenous youth of Karaga Region in Mindanao. It is recognized by DEEPED's Bureau of Alternative Learning System, or the DEEPED BALS, serving the Lumad people of Surigao del Sur. Their curriculum and method of instructions are specially designed for the distinct situation and needs appropriate to the culture and tradition of the different tribes of Karaga. It provides free education to every Lumad student with the goal of encouraging them to give back to their community. Alcadem's curriculum employs an interdisciplinary approach which aims to uplift the economic condition of the IP communities. Their major subjects include scientific, sustainable agriculture technology, animal husbandry, and organic farming technology. With agriculture at the very core, they teach science, history, and PHE as a major subject. Mathematics, English, Filipino, and values formation are thought as minor subjects. In their last year, they take up specialized skills and training along their practicum in field of agriculture, literacy and numeracy, community health care, and community capacity building. Alcadem's effort in bringing literacy, numeracy, and sustainable agriculture to Lumad communities merited the DEEPED's National Literacy Award in 2001 and 2005. It also topped the regional level of the DEEPED's National Literacy Award in the Outstanding Literacy Program category and placed fifth in the national level in 2014. Salugpungan International is a network which aims to support and promote the Manobo Talainod tribe's defense of their ancestral land and rainforest from destruction by corporate lagers, which started decades ago in southern Mindanao region of the Philippines. Salugpungan is a Manobo term for unity or gathering. Today, the Manobo Talainod tribe continues to protect their ancestral land, educate their children, and empower the communities through their community school named Salugpungan Tatanaku Ikna Ungon Learning Centers, which means unity in defense of ancestral land. The Salugpungan schools have permits to operate and have been complying with the K+12 curriculum, thus adhering to the basic formal education system set by the Department of Education. Currently, they are serving more than 1,500 students. The Salugpungan International also supports the Mindanao Interfaith Service Foundation, or the MISFI Academy, and other community schools throughout Mindanao, which has provided free, quality, culture-responsive education to the undeserved indigenous moro and rural communities throughout Mindanao for over a decade. Some of the schools under Center for Lumad Advocacy and Services Incorporated, or CLANS, in Soc Sargen, are still awaiting their permits from DEEPED despite having submitted all the required documents for operation. The application of many are being denied as part of the systematic attack against indigenous people, which the president is now openly advocating. With or without permits and government recognition, these institutions have already contributed to the community building and national development by promoting the social, political, and cultural well-being of the Lumad people since its inception. Madam Speaker, this representation adamantly asserts that the existence of the operations of these schools are clearly legal and constitutional. It is only unfortunate that instead of supporting their operation, they have been consistently subjected to militarization, attacks, and even killings by the military and their paramilitary groups under the past administrations. Two years ago, DEEPED issued a statement condemning the Liangga massacre where Lumad leaders and school administrators, Administrator Emerito Samarca were allegedly killed by Magahat Bagani Paramilitary Group in the 36th Infantry Battalion last September 2015. The Lumad from the Liangga Surigao del Sur spent more than a year in an evacuation center in Tandag City after the massacre. They returned in 2016 to find their homes and fields and ransacked and wrecked. The rehabilitation process is not yet finished, and justice for the tribe leaders and the executive director remains elusive. Today, under the implementation of martial law in Mindanao, our Lumad brothers and sisters from Liangga, San Miguel, and San Agustin were forced to evacuate due to heightened attacks by the military troops from the 75th IBPA, 36th IBPA, and 6th Special Forces Battalion since July 3, 2017. 200 learners of Alcadem and 43 volunteer teachers of five community schools of tribal Filipino program of Surigao Sur or trips evacuated due to a possible airstrike where an AFP bomber plane was seen hovering around the mountains in the nine communities of Liangga, including Sitio Hanayan in the village of Dayatagon. This representation, Madam Speaker, strongly condemns the continuing attack against IPs and the Lumad schools under the administration of President Duterte. There is at least one attack per week from July 2016 to July 2017. Military operations under the counterinsurgency program, Oplan Kapayapaan, and the Mindanao-wide martial law only endanger and disrupt the life of Lumad schools' teachers, staff, students, and community leaders. A total of 52 schools and 1,663 students were affected by the said attacks. Moreover, the attacks worsened since the declaration of martial law in Mindanao. A year ago, President Duterte promised us peace. He also claims that he is Maranau blood, yet schools independently put up by IPs themselves are still being targeted under this administration. What is worse is the president's threat to bomb Lumad schools. This representation, Madam Speaker, strongly condemns the president's threat as clear red tagging and endorsement of violence and murder against indigenous peoples. More so, as a commander-in-chief, his words are policies and orders to his men on the ground. The Save Our Schools Network reportedly last Tuesday that four members of the paramilitary group Alamara threatened to burn the Salugpungan Community School in Sitio Dulian, Barangay Palma Hill in Talainod Town. They threatened to burn the Salugpungan Community School if they are not able to kill at least one of the four people they have been looking for, namely students of the school, Lando Dalin, and PTC members Benansha Dalin, Benjo Bayaow, and Nonoy Dausai. This attack caused disruption of classes. Moreover, presidential spokesperson Banag blatantly red-tagged Alcadem, CLANS, and Salugpungan Community Learning Center. She also justified the president's threat to bomb the schools by saying that he only pertained to the so-called illegal Lumad schools. This representation can no longer take these governments' unrelenting attacks against Lumad schools, which have been working to combat illiteracy in the indigenous communities. I enjoin the DEEPED's leadership to stand with the Lumads against the military attacks on our schools, bomb threats, and threats to destroy school infrastructures made by no less than the president. Justice must be served to all the victims of militarization of communities, including the thousands of evacuees due to the martial law. Even the Education International, a global union federation that represents organization of teachers and other education employees, called on all its member organizations all over the world to condemn this human rights violation. EI sent a protest letter to President Duterte on July 24 and invited the government to endorse the guidelines for protecting the schools and universities from military use during armed conflict, an intergovernmental instrument to protect students, teachers, schools, and universities from the attacks. The IP Youth is challenging this administration to fulfill its mandate of providing free, quality, and accessible education to all. We are all reminded that upholding the rights of the indigenous peoples to mold their own system of education is essentially an acknowledgement of their right to self-determination. To end my speech, Madam Speaker, let me read the last part of Alcadem's Incorporated's open letter addressed to President Duterte. "We urge you, Mr. President, to reevaluate your current stance and withdraw your statement about bombing our schools. We ask you to keep your men in check and stop the militarization of Lumad schools. Most of all, we call on you to end martial law because far from ensuring peace and order, it only intensifies the military attacks and harassments in our community. Instead of attacking us, we enjoin you, recognize, support, and protect our schools. Stay true to the promise you made and stand with the people from Yusor to serve at the start of your presidency." Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Franz Castro to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we extend privilege hour for another 30 minutes.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that the gentleman from the First District of Lanau del Norte, Congressman Mohamed Khalid Dimaporo, be recognized to avail of the privilege hour and to talk about the Pantao Ragat raid and the inaction of the Department of Justice.
The Honorable Congressman from the First District of Lanau del Norte, Mohamed Khalid Dimaporo, is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Speaker, Majority Leader, colleagues in the 17th Congress, for the privilege to speak today. Assalamualaikum warakmatullahi wabarakatuh. In the run-up to the 2013 elections, there was a raid in my province as part of the campaign against private armies. This is either the biggest successful law enforcement operation in the region at the time, or a monumental disappointment in the application of law for the benefit of the general public's welfare. I wish to discuss tonight the 2013 raid in Pantao Ragat, Lanau del Norte. As part of their mandate to ensure honest, orderly, and peaceful elections, the Comelac imposes a five-month-long gun ban on the election year. The PNP implements the gun ban by establishing checkpoints, especially in areas identified as hotspots of violence during the elections. In addition, the PNP also establishes a task force to dismantle private armed groups that threaten the sanctity and integrity of the people's vote. So in preparation for the 2013 elections, the PNP conducted a raid in Pantao Ragat, Lanau del Norte, on February 13, 2013. CIDG Intelligence identified Vice Mayor Laxon Lantod as a warlord using the Citizens Armed Forces Geographical Unit, or CAFGO, as his private armed group. As a result of their intelligence operations, Executive Judge Marino M. De La Cruz Jr. of Branch 22 NCR Judicial Region Manila issued search warrant 13-21378. With the support of a warrant, CIDG Region 10 executed a raid using SAF personnel in coordination with local PNP and AFP counterparts. They convened in the AFP Brigade Headquarters at Barangay Maria Cristina, Ilegan City, and entered Pantao Ragat at the break of dawn. The raid was successful, as seen in the images on the screen. Seven members of the town's CAFGO were found in the residence of Vice Mayor Lantod. More than 40 guns were seized. The inventory included an M60 machine gun, six M203 grenade launchers, nine M14 Armalite rifles, 14 M1 Garand rifles, six short handguns, and an assortment of ammunition. PNP Region 10 spokesperson, Senior Superintendent Ronnie Francis Carriaga, reported that the house also yielded vests, ammunition, bandoliers, and other protective equipment marked AFP and PNP. and other protective equipment marked AFP and PRAT. The 2013 raid in Pantau Ragat is an example of good intelligence operations and textbook incidents-free execution. In recognition, incumbent Chief PNP Alan Purisima awarded the Medallia ng Kadikalaan to all personnel of CIDG Region Ten on March eighth, 2013. Three cases were filed in the Regional State Prosecutor's Office for violation of PD eighteen sixty-six, as amended by RA eighty-two ninety-four and RA ninety-five sixteen. Presidential Decree eighteen sixty-six was signed by President Marcos on June twenty-nine, nineteen eighty-three. The decree is titled Codifying the Laws of Illegal, Unlawful Possession, Manufacture, Dealing in Acquisition or Disposition of Firearms, Ammunitions, or Explosives or Instruments Used in the Manufacturing of Firearms, Ammunition, or Explosives and imposing stiffer penalties for certain violations thereof and for relevant purposes. The section states that the penalty of reclusion temporal in its maximum period to reclusion perpetua shall be imposed upon any person who shall unlawfully acquire or possess a firearm. The section also gives the same penalty to any public entity used by any person found guilty of possessing illegal firearms. Section three states that the penalty of reclusion temporal in its maximum period to reclusion perpetua shall be imposed upon any person who shall unlawfully acquire or possess hand grenades, rifle grenades, and other explosives. The same penalty is given to any public entity used by any person possessing illegal explosive devices. On June sixth, nineteen ninety-seven, the Tenth Congress passed Republic Act Number eighty-two ninety-four, amending PD eighteen sixty-six and categorizes firearms into low-powered and high-powered. The law reduces the penalty for possession of illegal firearms and explosives. Section one of RA eighty-two ninety-four reduces the penalty to prisyon correctional in its maximum period and a fine of not less than fifteen thousand pesos for any person in unlawful possession of any low-powered firearm, such as rimfire, three-eighty, thirty-two caliber, or other firearms of similar firepower, and reduces to prisyon mayor in its maximum and a fine of thirty thousand pesos for any person in unlawful possession of high-powered firearms, such as those with big bores, bigger bores bigger in diameter than thirty-eight caliber and nine-mmm like calibers forty and forty-five and other firearms with the firing capability of full automatic and by burst of two or three. The same penalty is imposed on public entities who knowingly allow any of the firearms owned by the public entity to be used by the persons found guilty of possessing illegal firearms. On December twenty-two, two thousand seven, the Fourteenth Congress passed Republic Act ninety-five sixteen, further amending PD eighteen sixty-six. It provided stiffer penalties for illegal possession of explosives and makes law enforcement agencies more responsible and liable in testifying as prosecution witness. Section one of RA ninety-five sixteen amended PD eighteen sixty-six to impose the maximum penalty of reclusion perpetua upon any person who shall willfully and unlawfully acquire and possess any explosive or incendiary device capable of producing destructive effects or causing injury death to any person. The section also provides that mere possession of any explosive device shall be prima facie evidence that the person had knowledge of the existence and the explosive character of the device. Section three of Republic Act ninety-five sixteen inserts section four, titled Responsibility and Liability of Law Enforcement Agencies and Other Government Officials and Employees Testifying as Prosecution Witness. It provides a penalty of reclusion temporal and a fine of five hundred thousand pesos in addition to administrative sanctions by his or her superior and/or the appropriate governing body should the member of law enforcement fail to appear as a witness for the prosecution in any proceeding. In summary, after the signing of Presidential Decree eighteen sixty-six by President Marcos, the legislative work of the Tenth and Fourteenth Congress provide the following penalties: For illegal possession of low-powered firearms, the penalty is six months to six years plus a fine of fifteen thousand pesos. For illegal possession of high-powered firearms, the penalty is six years and one day to eight years plus a fine of thirty thousand pesos. For illegal possession of explosives, such as rifle grenades, the penalty is twenty years and one day to forty years. Speaker, colleagues, the prison terms are my layman's understanding of what those found guilty after the Pantau Ragat raid will be sentenced for after the seizure of more than forty high-powered rifles, six handguns, and explosive devices, such as rifle grenades, if they were found to be illegally acquired. However, after a successful raid, after the CIDG was awarded by the Chief PNP, and after the cases were filed in the Regional State Prosecutor's Office, nothing has happened. It is as if the hard work and effort of our law enforcement agencies disappeared, once transferred to its counterpart in the criminal justice system, the Department of Justice. This caught the attention of volunteers against crime and corruption during the campaign period in 2013. As the May 2013 election was approaching, they appealed to the Comelec, PNP, AFP, and other law enforcement agencies to concentrate on dismantling known private armed groups. They made mention of the cases filed against the local officials of Pantau Ragat for the cache of firearms, ammunition, and explosives found during the February thirteen raid by SAF and CIDG, but for some unknown reason, was still stalled at the DOJ at the time. This placed into question the sincerity of the government's campaign to dismantle private armies. In the Sixteenth Congress, my predecessor, Congresswoman Angeng Kibransa Dimaporo, made two privileged speeches and filed House Resolutions regarding the cases filed in DOJ as a result of the Pantau Ragat raid. Unfortunately, her efforts were wasted. Because of the entirety of the Sixteenth Congress, the cases filed in the DOJ have not moved. In my capacity serving as provincial governor of Lanau del Norte for my third and final term from 2013 to 2016, I inquired with the Regional State Prosecutor as to the status of the Pantau Ragat case. The unofficial answer was that the cases were sent to Manila at the request of the RSP to inhibit himself out of fear from retaliation by a known local warlord. And perhaps because of my local stature, my queries were not entertained when following up the status of the cases in Manila. Now, as representative for the First District of Lanau del Norte, my first order of business was to write the DOJ under the Duterte administration as to the status of the cases. From August 2016 to December 2016, I was not answered. I wrote again early 2017 only to be informed that my concern has been forwarded to the Prosecutor General. Six months later, I'm still waiting, and I now feel compelled to file a resolution with regard to the Pantau Ragat cases. My resolution reads: A resolution directing the appropriate committees to conduct an investigation in aid of legislation on the status of the cases filed against local chief executives of the Municipality of Pantau Ragat, Lanau del Norte as a result of a police raid in 2013 for violation of PD eighteen sixty-six, as amended by RA eighty-two ninety-four and RA ninety-five sixteen. I find it unfortunate that it is often experienced in the ground. After good police work, the wheels of justice fail to turn because of the inaction or low performance of local prosecutors. The Pantau Ragat raid is an example of just that. Unlike the police raid in Osami City, which became a bloodbath, the Pantau Ragat raid was clean, and the suspects were apprehended, seemingly only to be released with their cases not seeing the light of day in the criminal courts. I appeal to the Department of Justice to intensify their role in our criminal justice system. This is supposed to be an administration for change. The intensified campaign of the Philippine National Police should be matched by the Department of Justice. Our success should be gauged by the number of suspects incarcerated instead of being neutralized. I hope the DOJ would thoroughly look into these cases because justice delayed is justice denied, and it has been now four years and counting that these cases sit pending in the Department of Justice. I pray for the support of the Seventeenth Congress and the DOJ that the Pantau Ragat cases be finally set in motion and that due process of justice may be observed. Thank you, dear colleagues. Thank you, Speaker. Assalamualaikum warakmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker.
Sorry, what is the pleasure of the Honorable Dimaporo?
Madam Speaker, in order that Congress may take notice of this issue, which has been asked in the last Congress and now again, may we ask some questions to the gentleman from the First District of Lanau del Norte in order that we may be able to highlight the problem that we are facing in Lanau del Norte and perhaps Mindanao? Or maybe this will be repeated in other areas of the Muslim provinces. May we therefore ask some questions, Madam Speaker?
Madam Speaker, I then move that we recognize the gentleman from the Second District of Lanau del Norte, the Honorable Abdullah Dimaporo, for his interpolation. So move.
The Honorable Abdullah Dimaporo is recognized. Kindly proceed.
Mr. Speaker, Madam Speaker, Laxon Lantod is a creation of the military. Just like Coratong Baliling and also the Ampatuwan. And I have heard that the Abu Sayaf is also a creation of the military. And perhaps there are other creations of the military being used by the military as local partners against insurgents and later becoming criminals. Madam Speaker, I wonder if the gentleman knows that Laxon Lantod has killed many personalities in his municipality? May I ask this question? If the gentleman knows, for example, that a first-degree assassin of Laxon Lantod was hit in the head when he was returning home, shot by Laxon Lantod himself because he wanted to run against him as municipal mayor? Does he know this?
Madam Speaker, I'm aware of the allegations. I would like to say allegations because nothing has been officially ruled in the court of law. But yes, locally, Vice Mayor Laxon Lantod is known to be an armed personality and very brutal in dealing with his enemies. I had the experience in the 2010 elections when his father ran in the Municipality of Matungao, and my mayor was his opponent. I was governor then. His brother was campaigning in the different barangays, and on the way home, he passed by the headquarters of Laxon Lantod's father, and they were all carrying M4s. And he was unarmed with his group and motorcycles. And all he can do is shout, "Bapa!", which is uncle. They're actually related. "Wag!", no. And Laxon Lantod, his father, opened fire. My municipal candidate's brother was actually hit. He was able to survive. He brought him to the hospital, took care of his medical bills, and then cases were filed. Unfortunately, after the election, the prosecutor handling the case against Laxon Lantod's father, the prosecutor was killed. So yes, there are a lot of allegations, Madam Speaker, of the violence involved with Pantau Ragat. Nobody would dare enter Pantau Ragat because they have full control of it. Locals call Laxon Lantod the Ampatuwan of Lanau del Norte. Pantau Ragat is like our Mamasapano, and that's why this police operation was such a success. Unlike Mamasapano, where there are so many police officers killed in Lanau del Norte, we were able to neutralize a warlord and seize so much firearms. And my question here in Congress is, ever since I was a governor, what happened then? What happened then? Because if the rule of law will not work, if our courts will not work, then how do we legally dismantle private armies? So yes, Madam Speaker, I am aware, as a former governor of the province, the history and the background of Vice Mayor Laxon Lantod.
Madam Speaker, to add more information on the killing of the provincial prosecutor of Lanau del Norte, then representative of Lanau del Norte in the past Congress asked Secretary de Lima of the Department of Justice to investigate the killing of her prosecutor in Lanau del Norte. And the answer was, she was too busy. And perhaps the same is being given to the gentleman of the First District of Lanau del Norte that the Department of Justice Secretary is very busy to attend to our problems on peace and order in Lanau del Norte. I wonder, Madam Speaker, if the gentleman also knows that in one election, Laxon Lantod lost in the precinct count and then in the municipal count in the provincial government property, the Mindanao Civic Center. The Sultan of Pantau Ragat lost in the municipal count. And in spite of the victory of Laxon Lantod, he laid siege on the barangay of the defeated candidate for about three weeks, and the military just watched him, saying that he has been identified and MLF. And later, the brigade commander said that it is redo, and they cannot attend to it. But then, people are saying, if it is redo, why the illegal guns are being displayed to lay siege on the barangay of the defeated opposition of Laxon Lantod? Does the gentleman know about this?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I'm aware of the... I know that Laxon Lantod was challenged at one point. He almost lost the Municipality of Pantau Ragat. And just like many municipalities in the interior of our provinces, where the reach of law is very far and the grasp of law is supply... In some cases, they don't even touch the... Or are felt. The presence of law is not felt. And that happens when election results are not in favor of one candidate. The only option is violence. And the purpose of my privileged speech here today is to ask that question, is what are we going to do about it? Is there a clear-cut policy on how to handle violence in the countryside? Is there a clear-cut policy of how to handle private armies? Is there a clear-cut policy of how to handle warlords? The answer is yes, but the real solution is for our courts to function. And this Pantau Ragat case is one example of our courts not functioning. Our police did their job. Congress gave them guidance. Congress gave them guidance and armed them with rule of law. They were able to seize so many firearms, but yet, once it reached the Department of Justice, nothing happened. How can we solve the problem of private armies? How can we eradicate warlords in our country if DOJ will not act on the laws passed by Congress? So yes, Madam Speaker, I'm aware of what's happening in Pantau Ragat, the political violence that's happening in Pantau Ragat whenever they are challenged. I'm aware of it, and I'm still waiting. I believe in our institutions, and I'm still waiting for our institutions to function. And it's my hope that in the Seventeenth Congress, we can prod the Department of Justice to make it work in my small corner of the country, Lanau del Norte.
Madam Speaker, to close my interpolation, I just want to state that if some of us are worried of martial law, why not many of us worry about the license to kill being given by the military to some group? Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Dimaporo and the succeeding interpolation of the Honorable Dimaporo to the Comedian Rules for its appropriate action. So move.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader. Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that the lady from Kabataan Partilis, the Honorable Sarah Jane Elago, be recognized to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Sarah Jane Elago from the Partilis Kabataan is recognized. May we inquire on the subject of the lady's privileged speech?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I will speak about free education and the celebration of the International Youth Day for this year.
Kindly proceed.
Madam Speaker and members of this chamber, before I begin, I would like to greet the guests of Kabataan Partilis in the gallery. They are from the USA chapter of the youth group Anak Bayan, a national democratic mass organization. With your permission, Madam Chair, please.
Please may the guests of the Honorable Elago's hand to be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Just last Friday, President Rodrigo Duterte signed Republic Act number one zero nine three one or the Universal Access to Quality Tertiary Education Act, which will provide free tuition and other school fees in all state universities and colleges, CHED-accredited local universities and colleges, and Testa Run technical vocational institutes. Under the new law, close to two million students of SUCs will not be paying tuition and other school fees. First of all, this representation thanks and congratulates each and every legislator in this floor that continually supported this measure. Indeed, this is a clear victory, a victory not only for the youth of today but also for future generations. But despite the passage of this law, we need to maintain our guard. We need to remain vigilant. We have to take note how Budget Secretary Benjamin Jokno and other economic managers not only expressed opposition to this bill but also made sure that not a single peso is allotted for its implementation in the twenty eighteen proposed budget. Congress has to address this fact with sheer diligence. Based on the twenty eighteen NEP, the government's economic managers expect all state schools to collect tuition totaling nine point one billion next year. We must ensure that this amount will be subsidized as not a peso should be collected if we want to actualize the real spirit of the new law. Also, we must collectively guard against possible limits that may be inserted in the new laws implementing rules and regulations. We note how our economic managers plan to spend up to eight point one trillion for the build, build, build infrastructure program until twenty twenty-two. It will only take about one point one percent of that or one hundred billion to allow budgetary support to free education in SUCs, LUCs, and Testa TVIs in the next five years. Your honors, Madam Speaker, that at present, the Philippines is only spending about four percent of its gross domestic product on education while six percent is the international benchmark. Further, our nation allocates about ten percent of the total education budget to tertiary education. This funding is relatively low in the ASEAN despite the Philippines being dubbed as one of the region's fastest-growing economy. Malaysia devotes as high as thirty-one percent while Indonesia apportions twenty-five percent. The international benchmark is at fifteen percent. Now, the only path to viability is to make a U-turn from a framework of generating income at the expense of students. Our call is this: yes, to build, build, build the future of the youth, leading a generation empowered and honed to their maximum potentials and able to serve the people and the nation. This representation intends to file a resolution this week to express the House's commitment towards funding RA one zero nine three one and I ask all of you, my dear colleagues, to join me in the said resolution. This is the investment in human capital development that we need in order to propel our economy upwards. Coupled with genuine agrarian reform, rural development, and national industrialization, we are taking significant strides towards the right direction to an inclusive growth, comfortable life, and better future for all. At the home front, the youth and student movement still has a lot of battles to wait. The actual and swift implementation of the no-collection policy in our public universities and colleges, the high cost of other living expenses for students including food, lodging, and transportation, and of course, the big elephant in the room, the yet-to-be-slaved high cost of matriculation and profiteering in our private schools worsened with the implementation of K-12. Concurrently, the theme for this year's UN International Youth Day celebration is youth building peace. Yes, the Filipino youth want to build peace. But how can we build peace if our very own government resorts to militarist solutions instead of addressing the roots of armed struggle, of armed conflict in our country? Martial law in Mindanao and the regressing elements of the peace negotiations only show that our national government is reneging on its duty to solve genuine peace. Naniniwala ang kabataan na kaya nating maabot ang tunay na kapayapaan. Kung kaya nga nating gawing posible ngayon ang dating imposible na katulad ng libre na edukasyon sa mga pampublikong kolehiyo, bakit hindi pa ang tunay na kapayapaan na may hustisya para sa lahat? With this, Madam Speaker, I add my privileged speech today, distinguished colleagues, Madam Speaker, with a challenge: empower the youth in building peace. Let us unite in building peace. Madam Speaker, hindi lamang para sa henerasyon na ito, kundi para sa mga susunod pang-henerasyon, para sa isang mas magandang bukas na malaya sa pangaapi at pang-sasamantala. Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker. Mabuhay ang mga kabataan na makabayan. Mabuhay ang mga kabataan na lumalaban. Mabuhay po ang mamamayan at lahat ng mga nakikiisa sa laban para sa tunay na paghawan ng landas ng kapayapaan na may hustisya. Maraming salamat.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the privileged speech of the Honorable Elago to the Comedian Rules for its appropriate action. So move.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to avail of the privilege hour, I move to terminate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, considering the copies of the journal of the previous session have been distributed, I move that we approve Journal number six dated August two, two thousand seventeen.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The journal is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until tomorrow, August eight, two thousand seventeen, at four o'clock in the afternoon sharp. So move.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Session is adjourned.